Good morning, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for being here. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting, Thursday, June the ninth, 2022. And we are convening on the territory of the Seashell First Nation. And I would like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty-two. And first point of order is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, modifications? I don't see any hands up, so motion to adopt the agenda. I move in second it, all those in favor. All right, agenda is adopted. All right, we have a delegation, and we're going to start out with Ryan Staley, Getting There Society and Coastal Rides regarding partnering with SCRD for on-demand transportation and grant funding. Can you hear and hear us, Ryan, and can we hear you?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you.
All right, excellent. Do you have a presentation for us?
I do have a brief deck, and so I'll, I'll start sharing that. And then I'll, I'll take it away if that's all right.
Yep, go ahead.
Well, thanks for having me here this morning. And I'm coming to you live from the traditional territory of the Seashell Nation as well. And yeah, I just wanted to speak to the SCRD about potential collaboration on digital on-demand and share what, what I'm working on and some of the conversations I've had with, with other groups in the community about potentially providing additional transportation services on demand throughout the coast. And so I'll start with a bit of an introduction about, about myself and about the company, and then get into some ideas about potentially what, what we, we'd like to do. So Coastal Rides is a, a ride-hailing company. We are licensed by the Passenger Transportation Board. We received our authorization to operate as a, what's called a transportation network service in Feb- February twenty-eighth, actually, of 2020, right before the world sort of fell apart for a couple of years. It's locally owned and operated, it's basically just me. I live in and have been in Seashell here, I live in Davis Bay. I've been here since, full-time since 2016. And, and I guess the impetus for starting a, a transportation system here on the Sunshine Coast was I was probably went, one of the first times I came over here and visiting friends was one of those lucky people that got off a ferry that was running late, and there was no way to get into, to Seashell or, or beyond. So a few years later, hey, let's, let's try to, try to make this happen. Currently, we're operating on the Sunshine Coast and the SCRD area, on Texeda Island, as well as in the Comox Valley. We are a, a, an app-based company. You know, our license for the transportation, Passenger Transportation Board requires all trips to be requested through our, our digital platform. We utilize technology from a company called Spare Labs, they're a Vancouver-based company. They, you, they operate digital on-demand transportation platforms for, for many transit agencies globally, including the pilot project that was, was operated up in Powell River. Our goal as a company, you know, beyond i- is really to be sort of a mobility as a service for rural communities and use a combination of vehicles that, that we own, as well as the sort of the owner-operator model that, that Uber and other, you know, large companies use to be able to really expand the fleet as needed, right? And then Getting There Society is, is a nonprofit that I started along with Mary Ann from, from Care for a Lift. And what we were finding is Mary Ann operated for a number of years as sort of a companion care service where, where if you need somebody to drive you and stay with you for a medical appointment, she does that. And what we found is actually operating, owning and operating a wheelchair-accessible vehicle was not something that, that was feasible from a sort of a, a business perspective. And so we've been working on trying to raise funds to, to get an accessible vehicle. We're, we're not there yet, but it's still in progress. So that's sort of a, you know, a bit of background on, on who I am and, and what, what we're trying to do here. And, and I just want to kind of look at some of the, the challenges that, that we're up against here in, on the Sunshine Coast, and there's probably lots more. You know, the missed ferry-bus connections when the ferry's not on its, its normal schedule is, is a, a big one, and we are picking up some of that slack whenever we can. We have a, a special rate for, for trips to and from ferry, the ferry, that's sort of a per-person rate, that's, that's less expensive than some of the other rates. Evening late-night service, you know, we're, we're able to, it's busy enough, you know, on Friday and Saturday nights to have service later into the evening. Other, other days of the week, we operate more on a, in a, a pre-scheduled service late, late in, later into the evening. And then, you know, with the seniors' planning table, I said, you know, sitting in on some of those meetings, the, the handi-dart and sort of the paratransit availability, particularly beyond the service area, which I believe is a hun- one-point-five kilometers from the highway up to Half Thim Bay, is, is really, really difficult. And so there's lots of people, you know, that live, live beyond in, in the Pender Harbor area and that could really use that sort of custom transit, but it's not available for them, as well as, you know, having to book two weeks in advance. And then, and then, you know, the Seashell to, to Earl's Cove, I would call it a transit desert, where, where there's a really, real gap in service and be able to provide, you know, passenger transportation service. And this, this little image is out of the, the engagement report for the Transit Futures Plan that's, that's recently been released, you know, and, and noting there, you know, exploring the feasibility of, of new service in these areas, you know, over the next five years. Seems like, I think, I think we could do better. And so that's, that's what I'm sort of proposing here. So, you know, what I, what I'd like to, to try to do here with, and with your support and maybe collaboration is, is create an on-demand service between Seashell and Earl's Cove. This map over on the right, that's actually just a heat map of our pickups over the last year, really focused around Seashell and Gibson's. And then, you know, in that sort of, that corridor to, to connecting Seashell and further up the coast, you know, a combination of dedicated service vans and cars overflow to rideshare drivers, right? And, and I think the, the reason for, you know, doing a, a pilot project rather than, you know, a study for say, is it's really difficult to, to gather data without actually doing things, right? You can, you know, I'm, I'm in the business of, of doing, you know, surveys and, and forecasting and, and the great thing about being in the business of forecasting is you can get it wrong every time, and they still get invited back to do more work. But I think we can, I think we can do a better job of really understanding what the needs truly are by offering some service, as well as with every trip, because we're, because of the digital nature of the, the interface, you know, we, we have somebody's email address as soon as they booked a trip, so we can follow up and say, hey, what was the purpose of your trip? You know, how could we ser- serve the community better and, and find ways to, to really provide, provide a great service in the community? You know, and, and this is, this is sort of the, the notion of an idea of first place to, to start a discussion, right? We, we looked at, at what we can offer with, with sort of a dedicated van service, and we can do it for about fifty dollars per hour. If you compare that to, to like a transit bus, you're looking at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour roughly, and obviously the SCRD is paying about half of that with B C Transit to picking up the rest. You know, potential, you know, you know, cost recovery, five dollars per ride, perhaps more for longer trips, but that's obviously could be, could be worked out. And then the really critical part would be analysis, user surveys, and, and reporting, right? And so what we're, we're sort of proposing here is a recommended minimum of twenty-five weeks, forty hours a week, for fifty thousand dollars. And in terms of funding this, the Rural Transit Solutions Fund from the federal government, they've got, the next intake should be announced soon, and they offer fifty thousand dollars to support of project planning and project design. So this is, while we're offering service, really, it's, it's a, a data gathering exercise and, and sort of consulting project to figure out what is really needed in that corridor. And obviously, you know, I can provide and, and my team can provide grant writing, support, you know, and, and look at other funding sources, if the SCRD doesn't have the funds to do this. But I think going after that federal money while it's available is a really good way to, to do this. So that's my, my brief overview of, of what I'd like to propose. And, and basically what I'm looking for is if there's interest from, from the board to, to direct staff to work together, work at, look at finding some grants, like the Transit, Rural Transit Solutions Fund, to, to fund the pilot project and see if we can improve passenger transportation services across the coast. Thanks. Any questions, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, and thank you for that great presentation. If you wouldn't mind stopping your screen share, perfect. And I will now take questions from the board. Anyone? Well, I don't see any hands going up. Oh, there's Leonard, okay, well, I'll save my comments until after, Leonard.
I, I think from your chart that you are doing, you're operating in the Seashell area already. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
And do you have numbers of trips you're, you're actually making now?
Yeah, we, we're, in, in terms of our, our trip volume, you know, we're, we're doing, you know, up to several hundred a month right now. We're at, you know, in terms of where, where we thought we'd be, starting the, the, the service, we're about where we thought we'd be two years ago after, after first getting the license. So, you know, we're, we're projected to, you know, if we continue on this trajectory, we'll, we'll be up to, you know, you know, up to, you know, beyond a thousand trips a month in, in the next couple of years. But it's, the, the thing that really holds us back and holds these kind of services back across the province is, is driver licensing, where, where drivers need to have, you know, a Class Four driver's license. And so we need to jump through some hoops to get that. It's not like, you know, like Uber in the United States where basically anybody can, can jump in and drive. In, in British Columbia, we've got a few more hoops to, to jump through, which is probably a, a good thing at the end of the day.
Follow-up, Director Lee?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Are you self-funded now in the Seashell area?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, I personally like the idea of staff exploring this idea, especially if there's some grant funding that could be accessed. I'm hoping that I can hear from some of the rest of the board as to what they think. Thank you. Director Hills?
Thanks, thanks, Chair, yeah, and thanks for the presentation, Ryan. The, the federal funding, the Rural Transportation Fund, can, can you apply for that directly?
It, it needs to be applied for by a regional district or a not-for-profit. Or like a local government.
So how, how would you, your organization factor into that package to put up a, a funding application? Do you, would, could you do it in the SCRD, provide a letter of support, or does it have to be all driven by the regional district?
It, it could be, if we did it as a nonprofit, if you provided a letter of support, we, we could drive it forward. I guess the, the, yeah, that, that would be one way of doing it.
Okay, I'm wondering if we could, oh, follow-up, Director Hills?
Yeah, thanks, and, and you do have a nonprofit that's established?
Yeah, we have a nonprofit called Getting There Society. And, and the goal of that nonprofit was, was to own and operate accessible vehicles in the community and, and to use them other, other for other community uses or as, as a, a public transportation, you know, on our, our transportation network service platform.
Thank you.
All right, Director McInnes?
Thank you, Chair, I just want to speak on behalf of Director McMahon, that she did indicate to me that she's very much in favor of having further, further research done into this in partnership with, with Ryan and his group.
All right, thank you. Well, as we don't need to pass a motion at this point in time, and I, I think we'll just say thank you for the information and, and hopefully we can... Oh, Director Seegers?
Thank you, could we make a recommendation to refer this to staff for further follow-up?
I'd be happy to second that recommendation. So is there anybody else that wants to speak to that motion? Director Bemish?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, what, is there a, is there a time factor for the grant? Does it have to be submitted by a certain date so that would drive the staff energy on this?
Yeah, currently, the, the next intake date has not been announced, and I'm, I'm working with our federal representative to find out when, when that's coming.
All right, Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering how this would fit into the staff's workload, we're getting pretty late in the year. I'd, I'd really like to see this done, but I would, I'd like to make sure we have the capacity to do it.
Any comments from staff? About workload?
Thank you, Chair. Well, last meeting, I presented my quarterly report, which had all of my work plan and priorities for 2022, and this was not on it, so that's just an answer to where my current priorities lie. But of course, we are always here at, at the board's pleasure as well. I guess one of the comments or questions I still have is, I'm not sure what the SCRD's role in this is if the organization can actually apply for the grant themselves. So I guess that would be further fleshed out, but thank you.
Director Seegers?
Thank you, I think referring this to staff actually lets them look at that. You know, what would, what would be the role, how much time would it take, et cetera? And then they could come back with recommendations to us about how to proceed. This time, we don't have enough information to make that call.
Okay, any more questions? There is a motion on the floor. Does anyone else? Otherwise, I'll just call the question, all those in favor? All right, that motion's carried. Thank you, Ryan, and, and I guess you, staff will be in touch with you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
All right, thanks very much, and we'll move on to our next delegation. And I will need to promote some folks. Adam Gibson, who I hear is Stu Frizzell. I will promote to panel. So I've promoted him to panelist, I think. And... There he is. And then we've got Brenda is already in. Is there anybody else that needs to be joining, Brenda?
Rick is already on, I see him. So there's Rick Hopper, myself, and Adam Gibson is actually, oh, he got it changed. Adam is the new president of minor hockey, and Stu's Zoom keeps defaulting to him, but I see he's got it name changed.
All right, perfect, well, we've got all three of you here. We will let you guys take it away at this, at this, at this point.
All right, thank you, Director Ties, and good morning, board. We're very happy to be presenting to you this morning and grateful to be doing so from the territories of the Seashell and Squamish Nation. And I believe Rick is in Powell River this morning. Most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, my name's Brenda Rowe, and I'm the vice president of the, our newly-minted Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society, which is a grassroots nonprofit society that we have formed to support our bid for a junior hockey team on the Sunshine Coast. Our purposes are really to attract and engage investors into this, this project, as well as putting the pieces together that is needed for us to put forward a successful bid, including all sorts of logistics, which brings us in front of the board today. Just to give you a little bit of our history, we're made up of four members of the community, one of which being Stu Frizzell, who is here with us today. Amongst the four of us, we have over thirty years of board experience in the world of minor hockey here on the Sunshine Coast. We have fulfilled leadership roles within the hockey world, both locally and in the lower mainland. And between the three of us, our boys have played on over eleven junior hockey teams in B C. And while that might not make them, you know, on the road to the N H L, it, we have spent a lot of time in ranks all over this province and have been privileged to see what junior hockey can bring to a community. We've seen how the rank can become a place to be on a Saturday night and how having a team to cheer on can unite a community. And I was reflecting this morning that, I was trying to think of other things that our community has united around, and I had a hard time thinking of something that was positive besides... Well, the first thing that came to my mind was B C ferries. So I'm, I'm looking for this to be something that our community can really unite around. And the, of course, the economic benefit around having a junior team in the community would be really great. So even, we know that hockey is a non-toer season sport, basically running from September to April. And even if you just look at the twelve weekends that you would have visiting teams here for our home games, that economic benefit would be, would be great. And just as an off note, I have put together a document with four or five studies on it around hockey and the benefits that they bring, especially to small communities around the economic side of things. And I will send that out to you guys after we have our meeting today. So we know this community would wrap their arms around this team and support it in every way that we could. And we know this because if we look back five years ago when we hosted the Midget Provincial, we averaged five hundred fans a game, many games pushed the one thousand mark. Or you can look back to three months ago when we had two local teams go to the Provincial, and they were unbelievably supported by local businesses to do so. Or you could look to just this past weekend where thirteen hundred people showed up to sign our support pledge in seven hours. Or to my email box that is filling up daily with offers of support and help from business who would really like to see this happen. Why now? Well, we've tried to make our way down this road before, but there's never been an appetite from other teams in the lower mainland to have us as part of the league. That appears to be changing. The league is also expanding to fourteen teams, which makes now our chance. And these chances don't come along too often. To that end, we have engaged the services of Rick Hopper to help us with our bid. Rick has an extensive hockey resume, building franchises from the ground up, himself having been responsible for bringing the Kings to Powell River in the late eighties. We have a vision of running a high-level program on the Sunshine Coast, and Rick shares this vision. So I'm going to turn this over to Rick, who's going to talk about the team side of things, and then to Stu, who will address how we envision being able to succeed and the need or, and where we need... Stu's going to talk about how we're going to succeed in our vision to get this franchise and what we're looking for from the SCRD. I just also want to point out to staff and, and the directors, I want to thank you for the questions that you've submitted, and we have done an FAQ document up to give some feedback on those questions, which I'll include in the package that I'll send out after the meeting and just in case we're not able to answer them all at this time. But we do look forward to taking your questions, so I'll turn it over to Rick at this point.
Thank you, Brenda, and good morning, everybody. I'm speaking to you, as Brenda mentioned, from my home here in Powell River. And once again, my name is Rick Hopper. I grew up in Thornhill, Ontario, I'm a transplant, as many people are to the coast. Played my youth in junior hockey back east in the Toronto area, and I started coaching originally in the early eighties at Georgian College in Barry, Ontario, where I started up a college hockey program and spent two years there, basically getting them off the ground. And, and they had a successful program for many years thereafter. I spent two years, it seemed two years is my magic number. I left in nineteen eighty-four to come west, work in the Western Hockey League with the Victoria Cougars and the New Westminster Bruins. And also in nineteen eighty-eight, I was hired by a lo- local group of business people here in Powell River to locate, relocate a franchise, the Delta Flyers, from the lower coast and bring them up to Powell River, the city of Powell River. And thirty-three years later today, the Powell River Kings still exist in existence, and it's been a long and storied journey for them. And I'm proud to say that I had a, a hand in, in creating that little enterprise for them. I was recently contacted by Stu and company about, about their interest in the lower coast. And I've had a, a lengthy relationship over the last probably dozen years through minor hockey with Stu and company. And I've always been very high on the Sunshine Coast. I think that it's a terrific little community, and it reminds me a great deal of what Powell River was in nineteen eighty-eight. It's, the similarities are rather striking, actually. Powell River's building at that time was thirteen years old when we brought the, the Kings to town and the Powell River or the Gibsons and Area Community Center is thirteen years old today. So it, it's rather striking, and, and the same challenges exist in, in the Sunshine Coast, the lower coast, as they did up here. To get a franchise, to move... to move into those communities takes a lot of time and effort and expertise. To give you an idea of how much the landscape of the hockey business has changed in that period of time, in 1988, Joe Masvidanato and his group of business people purchased the Delta Flyers for the grand total of $23,000 to move them here to the coast. And so with that, and a two-year contract with me and a tank of gas, I loaded a van up with some hockey equipment, and we started a franchise. In today's world, a franchise now in the PJHL is going to cost in the neighborhood of between $500 and $750,000. And that's just the purchase of the franchise. There's considerable amount of other things required to, to get that franchise off the ground with equipment and transportation and all those sorts of things as well. So that's one of the things that I'll be addressing with the PJHL over the course of the next three months. And I've been, I've been hired by the group to spend three months focusing on bringing a franchise to the Sunshine Coast. And our vision is not necessarily just a junior hockey club. I, I proposed to these guys, when they first contacted me, I told them what my vision would be, to start a enterprise of this nature. And that is a hockey enterprise from top to bottom, which starts with a U21 junior team in the PJHL, but expands into academy programming, spring programming, and summer programming. And this provides a huge impact on your, your community. Not only will it bring sports entertainment to town, it's going to provide positive role models for your local youth. It's going to give local hockey players opportunity to stay at home and play a high level of hockey at home. It's going to import a tremendous amount of players, families, and other participants for what is ultimately the sports tourism model, which is so, so prevalent today in, in, in the hockey world. So there's economic benefits, of course. There's employment benefits and a number of other spinoffs that will occur. To make this happen, I've had extensive conversations with both the lead commissioner and the chair of their steering committee. And, you know, they love the concept of, of coming to the Sunshine Coast. They think we could be a real valued member, especially with our vision and what we want to be. We're not chasing down the standard or regular program. We want to have a flagship franchise that basically has the values of what they see their league becoming. And that's what we intend on doing. So there's, there's quite a bit of support we need in order to make that happen, not the least of which is an infrastructure improvement at the local facility, at the Gibson's Community Center. Stu's going to speak on that in a minute here. And I think if, if all things come together, not only will we be able to attract the investment we require to make this a reality, but I know for sure in my conversations, I've been very motivated by my conversations with Trevor Alta, lead commissioner, and Doug Patterson, their steering committee chair, that they are very interested and keen on what we have to offer. And I think that, as Brenda had mentioned, the timing is perfect for junior hockey to come to the Sunshine Coast. So thank you very much, everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Stu. And of course, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And I apologize for the, the naming at the beginning there. My computer still wants me to be a part of minor hockey. That was a, you know, a long stretch of volunteering, but there is a new, there's a new leader of that group. And so that, that would be Adam that I showed up as. But I, thanks for giving us the opportunity to come and let you know what, what we have in front of us here. It was important for us to, to be clear that we're, we aren't coming asking for funding. We're not looking for a tax increase. Rather, we are looking for the support of municipality through an agreement. As was mentioned, the, there, there has been long a desire to enter into this, this level of hockey locally here. The time, the time is now for it. Like, it is now. We have, the door is open and waiting for us. But we need to, we need to make sure that it gets done right. Our intention is to start very strong and be prepared for a really thoughtful and planned development into future opportunities. And we want to build it so it's going to last. I mean, the idea is not that we're going to put together a handful of events that'll be real popular, but rather to build a legacy program that is going to serve this community for generations to come. Now, our keys to success in this endeavor, first and foremost, acceptance into the league. Now, this league has new, new leaders, a new ownership group and commissioners. They are improving. They are really stepping up their, their, their league. And they have plans to expand by one team. So the opportunity is that now for us to, to be that team, the likelihood of our approval right now is stronger than it, it ever has been. And that's, you know, largely in thanks to conversations Rick's having, and also to the, you know, the, the cooperation that we've had from, you know, our situation with our municipality and our town support. The arena, they've upgraded the arena facility is really a vital aspect to getting acceptance into the league. The upgrade project that we're proposing and the, the agreement around that is, not only is it going to demonstrate to the league that we understand what the needs are of a team to exist in the community, but it also is going to demonstrate that we have the support of our community behind us, by the way we're going to, we're, we're going to get this done. The other, another key to success is the investment side of it. We've seen local business, community has really shown huge support for minor hockey for many years, and they continue to do that. There's also private investors that are ready to back this initiative with capital. So we, people, people are ready to get behind this and get behind it in a way of providing capital investment. The, the, the third key part of the success is going to be the support piece. Now, we know that the community is strong. We, we went and asked a question last weekend. And as Brenda said, you know, we had, we had a huge, huge response in a few, a few, a few hours on a rainy afternoon, you know, we asked the community if they were ready for this. And they told us in a huge way that they were. The other support we need is in the form of this P3 agreement, private-public partnership agreement with, between our not-for-profit society and the, the local municipality with SCRD, and which would allow us to recover the capital investment through the operation of the Gibson's facility. And would also lay out what, what the hockey enterprise would need in, as far as program needs, not only initially, but through the, through the growth phase that would, you know, outreach to more of the community through the programs Rick talked about. So what we've done so far is we've been in contact with professionals, and we're prepared to engage them, engage council to draft a P3 agreement, of course, in collaboration with the, with the RD staff. We also have been in contact with architects experienced in these types of work on public buildings to prepare drawings for us that we, that will be developed in consideration for future planning and development opportunities at the arena. And we're ready to bring isometric concept drawings forward by June the 23rd. So that's what we're ready and waiting to do. And what we're asking for this committee to do is to recommend that the, that the board provides direction to staff to work with the Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society, to define the terms of the P3 agreement that we, we're seeking, to release the architectural drawings for the purpose of presenting the, the proposed upgrade, and to do the work necessary to prepare the board to enter into an agreement in principle by July. Now, the, the, we would like this team to be hitting the ice for the first time in September of 2023. So there's a lot of, a lot of work to do between now and then. But as we said, the opportunity is huge. This is a longstanding dream of the community, and it is becoming a reality because we are, we are poised to present, and we feel that we will be accepted. So look very much forward to working with regional districts staff to define the agreement that we can put in place to make this all a reality. And with that, I would invite any questions from the committee?
All right. Thank you. And I will now open it up for questions from the directors, which I'm sure there are many of. Director Seegers?
Thank you. I know through other conversation that there is a timeline that you're working inside of to move this opportunity forward. Do you have any certainty around any of those dates at this time?
Well, the league has asked us to present at their AGM, which will be at the, in, at the end of June, coming up on the 25th. They are asking for us to come forward with a, with a bid, basically a presentation of the opportunity. And we would be looking to have a approval for acceptance into the league by the end of August. The, the addition, the, the expansion of the league will happen in that 2023 season. So in order to facilitate that, that would be the timeline. And so we'll want to have our upgrade completed, you know, in the late spring of next year.
All right. Director Bemish?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation. I, I'm really enthusiastic about this for the town because I believe the town will benefit strongly from the economic side of this and the activities around that and everything that Mr. Hopper mentioned in there. It's the positive nature of the sport. So we will clearly work with the regional district in terms of how this happens. It hasn't been presented to our council yet, so they have to have to look at that. I don't know where the recreation is a regional service. The building is part of that recreation, that, that regional service. And you'd be looking for an expansion on that building, a, an expansion of the footprint of the building onto additional town land. And that's all things that has to go in a legal sense. I don't know what the background and the process of that is, but certainly our staff will be prepared to help. That being said, I know we are fully booked every Tuesday of the month of June with meetings already scheduled and already, already with their calendars, their, their activities. So, so if you need to get in front of Gibson's council, we don't meet in August, so that there's a lot of, not a lot of meeting time left for council to consider it. And so that somebody's going to have to come and make a proposal and get our signature on a, on a lease amendment. I don't know if this requires, well, obviously we have to advertise because it's a disposition of property. And so we have to advertise according to the Local Government Act and, and all of these things. So all that kind of stuff has to be dealt with. And so we need to take a look at the process on that. So, but look forward to working with you. Look forward to success. Thank you.
Director Pratt?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. And there's certainly a lot of consideration to have here for not just the capital outlay and how that'll work, but also the ongoing asset management of the project. And, and I will say, I'm, I'm not really familiar with many, if any, P3 projects that have actually gone forward in the coast, on the coast in recent years. So this is like, this would be breaking new ground for, for a lot of our government here. So I know staff and the, and directors have all had a number of questions and considerations. And there's, there's a lot to work through and, and look at in a very, very short timeline. I won't tell you what I said under my breath when I heard your timeline, because that's just eek. But part of the consideration for this is not just what's going to be happening at the government level. It's also what this is going to look like in the community with housing, billoting of staff and players and visiting teams. And, and I'm wondering if, if the committee has done any work with that so far, because we are in a housing crisis on the coast. So, and that's, if you're looking at 2023 and knowing where we are right now, I'm just wondering if that kind of consideration has been thought of yet, or if that's kind of the next step in all of this. And I'd really like some comment on that as well. On, because this is a significant impact on the community because you're, these, the players that are going to be coming in are not necessarily going to have families within the community or places to stay. So the, I'm sure billoting or some kind of housing needs to be looked at. But also the visiting teams. We don't have the hotel capacity in the, in any season. That's, it's a significant piece in, in bringing anyone forward. So, thanks.
Would you like me to speak to that, Stu, or Brenda?
Just let me say a couple of things, Rick. Thank you for the question and fair point. We, I am 110% sure just by the number of people who have already come and said that they would be billet families, that billoting is not, not going to be an issue. And billoting fees are all structured into the fee that a player, you know, plays when they, or pays when they come to play. I'll let Rick answer the hotel question perhaps because maybe you've already had a conversation.
Thanks, Brenda. Yeah. And just, just to speak to the billoting situation, these seems, these things seem to take care of themselves. And it's not an extreme amount of billet families that we would be looking for, for year one. There's approximately 23 players that will participate in year one. And some of those players may be local. And I think that typically what happens is you see a groundswell of support from your local minor hockey families in particular, that like to have one of these players come into their home and provide that positive role model that I spoke about here previously. So I'm not the least bit concerned on the billet situation. However, as we build things out and get into academy programming and everything, there's no question that accommodations of all that is, is, is a priority and a, and a concern. When it comes to the hotel nights required, we would play 12 doubleheader weekends over the course of the season for the junior team. And what that means is that the team would come in, they'd play on a Saturday evening, and a Sunday afternoon, they require one night's accommodation. Ideally, a property, hotel property that is located close by the facility, and I've already started conversations with a particular enterprise, would be desirable so that our teams will likely be transported by us to our facility, to the arena, and have a, a hotel accommodation close by where they can walk back and forth. And so I don't see an extreme amount of difficulty providing those accommodations because they're only looking at approximately 12 rooms per night, per weekend. And that, but that's just the start. So as we grow this out, for sure, there'd be an impact that way. But it'll be a positive impact because there'll be many hotel nights required, which means dollars. And I'm sure they'll welcome that with open arms.
Follow-up. Director Pratt?
Yes. So regarding the billoting and, and the finding, I, I hope that is the case because having been involved as a school board trustee and also as a parent who has taken in exchange students and as also, as, as well as being a rotarian, dealing with an exchange program, I can, I can tell you that it, it can be really difficult to find families that can take people in. that can take people in or will, are willing to take in youth, um, uh, even though they may be supportive and once they start looking, once the, you know, the decision is like, okay, you know, yes or no, it, it can be really difficult. Um, also, um, I'm just wondering, uh, staff had provided the board with considerations and questions regarding this delegation. I'm wondering if this has been provided to the delegation or whether or not we should maybe go through some of these now because, um, this is a really big thing, um, for the community to consider. And, um, I, I think it's really important to have these conversations in the public realm and be asking these questions in the public realm as early and as quickly as possible, especially based on the very abbreviated timeline that, um, this delegation is working under. Thank you.
We, we did receive the questions and I have done up a document with responses, um, uh, to them. Um, I, I mean, I guess we could screen share it or I could just, uh, send it out to you guys after, or do you want, how would you like to handle that maybe is the question?
It's a good question. I, I, I think this, uh, this discussion could go on for the rest of the day if we wanted to entertain all of this. Um, so I do think that, um, maybe if we can get that, uh, shared and then I think maybe, um, uh, I think what we're looking for here today is, uh, the board's desire to explore this further rather than, uh, to hash out the details. Uh, because there's, uh, I've got about a thousand questions myself that I don't think are going to be answered today. So, um, I think what we're trying to get to here is a, a point where we say, well, this is worth exploring. And then, um, and then hopefully we can, uh, we can then, uh, have future meetings around, um, around some of the details once staff has also had a look at the responses. So, um, I'll, I'll go to Director Hiltz at this point, but, uh, I think, I think going into the details now is probably going to be too, too kind of time consuming.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Yeah, the, the, the time is, uh, is short. Um, and so hockey's all about competition, right? Um, so I'm, I'm guessing that you guys will be competing against other bidders at the AGM. I'm, I'm suspecting that the Sunshine Coast is not the only bidder for one, one placement. That's, I understand the league is expanding by one team and the league, the league spans from the Kootenays to the island. I'm, I'm not even sure where P, P, PJHL it goes to. So I'm like, what, what kind of, what's the, the, the temperature of the community that you're bidding with in, um, in terms of the timeline? And I understand that sometimes these bids take years to complete, like I believe Quinell's been working on one for five or six years. So, uh, just who are you competing against? And, and what kind of communities are they? Do you know the communities that you're competing against? Thanks.
You want to take that, Rick?
Sure. So to date, when we present on the 25th, uh, we, um, will be the only delegation applying for an expansion franchise. They have on their agenda a, um, a group that's taking over ownership, I believe, of Port Moody, I think it was, that goes before us. So there's no official, um, bids in other than ours will be coming at the moment. However, uh, they've had interest expressed from Bellingham, Whistler, Squamish, Hope, a number of different areas. There's a brand new arena that's just been built in Coquitlam. They're really interested in that facility. So there are other pressure points out there. They do, uh, field calls from interested parties on a fairly regular basis, but we're, we've been, uh, at the forefront of this, this year in particular. And I think we stand a very good chance of, of getting in the way of that. They've, they've actually expressed to me that they feel the Sunshine Coast is a very good fit for them. Um, the stumbling block, of course, is location and they are typically not an overnight league where their teams travel and stay in a hotel and do all that sort of thing. So this will be outside the box for them. And just for everybody's reference, the Pacific Junior Hockey League operates in the lower mainland. There are three junior B leagues in the province, the Kootenay International Junior Hockey League, the Vancouver Island Junior Hockey League, and the Pacific Junior Hockey League. And they all, uh, compete independently and then have a playoff for a provincial champion who then can go on to a Western Canadian championship. Uh, so that's the, uh, the sort of dynamics of the league itself and, uh, and where we, where we stand at the moment as far as our application is concerned.
Director Seegers.
Thank you. Um, as has been indicated, the questions did go out to, um, the group here so that they can put the answers together for us. I think there's, there's lots of work to do on all sides, but I know that at this point, um, I think we'd like to refer it to staff to, um, explore the opportunity further and see how we can work with the, with this group. Um, once that, once staff starts moving that forward, I'm sure that those questions and the answers could be part of what comes back in a public meeting so that information is then available to the community. Cause I, I agree, this is, you know, this has to all be public. Um, it was, it was heartening to see the, um, the two events you had on the weekend and the fact that this is out in the community. There's an article in the paper, uh, so it's publicly known at this point. It's not, you know, this isn't the first that the community's heard of it. So I'm excited by it. Um, I'd like to see how we can make it move forward. The timeline is tight. We're working in government. Government is slow. You know, everything we do has to be public and, and there's lots of work to do here, particularly in that timeframe. So one of the things inside of that, I'll make the rec, the formal recommendation, but one of the things inside of that, that I think we're going to be looking to staff for is if, if we can move this forward in a way that both protects us and the community, but also provides your group with the support that you need in order to be able to move it forward with the league, right? We can't necessarily commit at this point because the P, we're not going to have a P3 agreement in place. There's all kinds of pieces that need to be sorted out. Um, but you need to know whether or not you have support here to iron those pieces out. So I'd make a recommendation that this be referred to staff, uh, to explore the opportunity, the opportunity further, uh, with a report coming back, you know, within a timeline that facilitates the direction you're looking at moving. Thanks.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm not seeing a second or doesn't, oh, Director Toth is seconding and he also has his hand up. Do you want to speak to it then?
Sort of. Um, it, it does tie into this a bit. I guess in, in regards to that tight timeline, uh, I guess how often does the league look at expansion? If you're not able to turn around a bit in time to make this expansion deadline, are you looking at three or four years down the road or are you looking at 10 or 12 years down the road? You know, when, how often do they look at expansion? Thank you.
Rick?
All right. We've got, uh, Stu have his, has his hand up, but then, but Rick is going to answer.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'll let Rick answer that first.
So I, I can say that, um, and as I talked about before, three or four years from now, one of these franchises may be worth $1.5 million. I, I mean, I have no idea. I can tell you that in 2010, we had a local group here in Powell River look at adding a junior B franchise to our hockey landscape and the, the purchase price would have been $60,000 at the time. And now it's, uh, I think they're at about half a million dollars to get into their league. So, um, time is of the essence. They're going to fill this spot. Um, they're, they're interested in many different areas, but they're not out actively pursuing any one area in particular, but they really like, like what we have to offer and they think we'd be an exciting component to the new direction that they're trying to take. So I can't, uh, stress how important it can, it will be to have a certain level of comfort from your group here today that when I present with Stu at the June 25th, uh, AGM, that it would, we at least have your support and that we realize that government is a slower process, but if, uh, if we know that the agreement in principle can be put in place, you know, sometime in that timeframe between the end of June and, and the end of August, I think that'll give, um, me the confidence to say that to their board and that, um, they'll take that, take our word on that and, and that, um, you know, they could, they could potentially approve the application based on certain requirements, one being that infrastructure improvement, the things that we need to, to operate.
Okay. Uh, GM Gagnon, I'll go to you before I go to Stu.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, just a lot of things and buttons need to be pressed. Um, I could just, from a point of clarity, from the motion perspective, I do, I would really like some guidance in terms of the timelines of what we are talking about from a report back. And I, I don't want to put words into the group's, um, mouth, but I, I hear, um, Mr. Hopper saying that he needs to present something at June 25th, which basically is, is some form of agreement in principle, I think is what I heard. So does that mean that something has to come back to this board prior to that, um, so that we understand what agreement in principle looks like? I, I just need some clarity around the dates from a report back perspective, if I could get that, please.
All right. To the GAT delegation, is that Rick maybe answering that?
Uh, Shelley, I, I think it's important, not necessarily to have that agreement or all the, uh, I's dotted, T's crossed, but as, as I mentioned, I think as long as we have, if I have the confidence from your group here today that you support that initiative and that it's being worked on, I, I think that gives me what I need to, in my presentation. I'm going to give them an overall view of what the logistics are, what a team looks like in, in Sunshine Coast and how we're going to operate. I think those are the critical components and e- even, uh, Trevor Alter, their commissioner, has said that, you know, you're presenting to us what the vision is, what it looks like there, and then all the, all the details will be hammered out over the course of the next couple of months after that. And so there's going to be a follow-up, uh, after the AGM where they're going to bring their steering committee members, uh, group them to the coast and we're going to, uh, host them there and, and view the facility and just have a face-to-face meeting with them. So as we're moving along, the agreement and whatnot and, and direction from, from the board to your staff could happen, but all I need is that, is that sort of vote of confidence from you guys that, hey, yeah, we support this and, uh, and we, uh, we're behind you making that presentation.
All right. I, I'm personally feeling that, um, you know, I like the idea of, of this, uh, of this, but I, it's, I find it pretty hard for me to say, yes, we're, we're in full total support of this until we actually start hashing out the details. And that's, um, you know, will we need year-round ice? Will we need new change rooms? Will we need, uh, some, somewhere where we need to collect admission? Do we need, like, all this kind of stuff is, uh, is, will add cost to our facilities? Uh, you know, what, what if the, the, the team folds or winds down? Well, what happens then? Like, these are all questions that I have that, uh, aren't answered at this point and, and we'll, we'll make a, a, a big determination on the final decision. Um, so, well, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm not clear whether that is enough of a vote of confidence for June, uh, going onwards, but, um, I'll, I'll go to, uh, I'll go to Stu at this point and, uh, and we'll go back to the directors.
Okay, great. And I hope that I can, uh, provide some clarity for, uh, GM Gagnon, uh, around timeline. I think, uh, what we would like to be able to do out of today, uh, is, is to know that there's interest enough to, uh, to have staff spend some time with us to answer those questions. We've got the initial questions. We'll, we'll send that out to you after this, this meeting, but there's, there's still a fair amount of work to do. Um, as far as the, um, uh, the 25th goes, we would like to be able to, as part of our presentation to the AGM, is to present, uh, those isometric concept drawings. So, um, I'm not sure if that needs, if the staff needs specific direction to forward the, uh, as-built drawings of the facility, uh, so that we can, uh, get our architect working on those drawings, which would be ready for the 23rd. Um, and so what we would want to do is to be able to put ourselves in a position to come back to the board, uh, with a lot of the details, uh, answered and a drawing of what it would look like and a lot better information to put you in a position where we could achieve agreement in pr- principle in, in July, like prior to August. Uh, so I think that's kind of, that's kind of the timeline that we're looking for. We just, we're, we're looking for being able to work with staff now with the, the target of the June 23rd to, uh, be able to present a much more detailed presentation and, uh, and, uh, working towards that agreement in principle for July.
Uh, does, does that mean you're talking about another presentation to the board, uh, Stu, or is that, uh, not clear on that?
Uh, if that is the, uh, you know, if, if you'll, uh, if you'll take us on the 23rd, then we would come with a, uh, with, you know, drawings and a lot of those, a lot of the details around the, uh, the, what the P3, uh, would look like and, um, not, not being, understanding that we won't be have it fully in place, uh, you know, prior to probably, uh, September, um, but that, uh, we would be able to allow the board to get behind, uh, the, uh, the, the principle of entering into the agreement, uh, in July. So when we're in front of that steering committee, we, that will allow us to get our final approval from the league, knowing that we have, uh, you know, that, that this is actually not an idea, but something that is, uh, wanting to be pursued by all parties.
All right. Director Pratt.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm just, my, my brain is overloading, so I can't imagine what GM Gagnon is doing right now. Um, because I, I'm thinking back to that 30-page report that she presented last month on, um, her work plan and her quarterly report. And, um, it's just, there's a lot, um, there's a lot going on in her department right now and this is a very, very tight timeline. And I'm wondering, um, would a, oh, is, is, um, I'm wondering how, how much we have to commit as a board to moving this forward without, um, without going 110% as well in, like, can, um, with, with still being able to support it in principle, um, but being able to provide you with information and what that would look like, uh, like when you go to your meeting on the 25th? Um, because I, I'm thinking, like, going backwards and thinking timelines, like if you present to us on the 23rd, that means that, um, like our, um, we would need paperwork and everything in to review the Friday, the Thursday before, so it's prepped for the board or for those meetings, um, like all of the documentation, all of the, there's, and I, and I know not all the questions are going to be answered and even as you move along on one of these processes, it takes months sometimes to figure out, oh, wait, we didn't think about that. Um, you know, or something comes up. So, um, it, it's just, it's such an abbreviated timeline. It's, it's, um, it's, it's a significant change to, uh, the work plan of an entire department. And, um, I'm, I'm wondering how we can move this forward. So maybe it's a question for staff and the delegation together is how to move this forward in a way that we can provide conditional support or just provide, uh, support in principle without, um, committing 120%. conditional support or just provide support in principle without committing 120%, but still manage to move forward, if that makes sense.
Thank you Director Pratt. One thought I just had was that there, we, we can make a motion at committee here and then have some time to read through the responses that we are just receiving now between the committee decision and the board decision to help us a little bit along, but I don't think that's going to get us to a place where we can confidently say, yes, we wholeheartedly endorse this project. Director Seegers.
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to our, to the recommendation that I put forward to address GM Gagnon's point. And I'd like to have that report come back to us at the June 23rd meeting. And I'd like this recommendation to go to the board this afternoon. And I understand the workload, and I think that's part of the report that will come back to us at June 23rd. You know, do we have the capacity? Do we not have the capacity? How, how could that potentially move forward? We're still not going to have all the answers on the 23rd. I know one of the questions that, that has come forward from the group is they need to see the plans of the, you know, the ASBILTS of the arena to actually work with their architect. Until we actually had the, you know, Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society, which they have just recently set up, there was not even an organization we could provide those to. So that's part of the information and, and work that staff will do with them as well. Are we going to have all the answers on the 23rd? No. Will we have sufficient that we can actually agree in principle? I don't know. But that's what's going to be asked of us at the 23rd. And, and from whatever comes back to us with the, the questions to the, you know, the answers to the questions we've already given, all of that kind of stuff, we'll at least have more information, the committee will have more information to be able to see where we can go or what we have to do. Thanks.
All right.
Sorry, one further thing is somehow they need to get in front of the Town of Gibson's as well, prior to the 23rd.
Okay, that, that's an amendment to a motion. Do I have a seconded for that amendment? Oh, seconded by Director Toth, all right. Do you want to speak to the amendment, Director Bemish?
Yes, I think I do, actually, because I think it's important. Mayor Seegers mentioned this just as a kind of a last breath, but we also have staff that are going to have to be involved in this, and they also have a workload. I mean, we had two delegations this morning. We referred both of them to GM Gagnon for work. And I think that's grossly unfair of our staff, to our staff. The first one could have been handled by a letter of support, quite frankly. They said that. And, and so that, this is a big project. There's some significant legal matters involved in this. We're talking, as I say, about our disposition of land with the Town of Gibson's. And we have, we're going to have to kind of take a look at this as well, from that perspective. We have a, a limited staff capacity as well. So GM Gagnon is going to have to deal with our staff as well in terms of putting her report together for this board for the 23rd. And, and I know where our staff commitments lie. So it's a big question, and it's a, it's a positive outcome, no doubt about it. But there's a lot to pull together by limited staff resources in, in both of our organizations. And so that I really encourage them to, to have those meetings. It has to come before Gibson's council. There are legal processes in terms of land disposition. And I don't know if we have to actually amend the service agreement that, that we have and how that's going to, so that obviously the corporate officers are going to have to be involved in that process legally. So a number of issues and dimensions to this program when we're, it'd be nice if it could be accommodated in the building as it exists, but obviously that's not the case. So, so we need to take a look at the impact of any change on the land base there. And I don't know if that comes down to talking about parking, so that becomes another concern. So I appreciate it. I encourage staff to work together. It has not been presented to our council as well, and I know it's not on the agenda as forthcoming, that I'm aware of, so that it needs to get on the council agenda to inform them of what's happening. So, so we need to do that. So lots to do. Thank you.
All right. Brenda, do you have something to say to the amendment, or can we move? Okay, let's, let's, let's call the question on the amendment at this point. And all those in favor? All right, motion carries. And so that's the amended motion on the floor. Do, let's, okay, let's go back to Brenda, and what do you want to say?
I, I just wanted to say that I, you know, we feel your pain around this timeline. And because we would love it to be different as well. And it's one of those things that, you know, we just don't have, we don't have control over, and we, you know, so I, I feel you guys, I hear you 100%. We will make ourselves available, you know, as we have been doing, whatever, you know, we can do to help. Unfortunately, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the questions that people have, you know, we're not going to get to the answers until we're able to meet with staff and go through some of those details. But I just wanted to put it out there that we totally understand the whole timeline issue, and we will make ourselves 100% available to give this the greatest chance of success.
All right, Director Hiltz.
Yes, thanks Chair. Speaking to the, the request for staff report, I guess, I'm interested in the scope of what we're looking for, is what, what I heard the group says, they need the plans. So I think the staff, the plans should be readily available, but how much staff effort do we want them to put into? That's kind of where I'm sort of stuck, is what are we going to ask them to bring back in two weeks' time that is going to help us understand? Is the group needs plans, they're going to come up with drawings, show it to the, the vision to their group, and I'm going, what, what information is staff going to come back to this board with? That, you know, the cost of the infrastructure improvements, you know, class D estimate, you know, I'm going, what are they going to possibly bring back in two weeks? Like, what, what can they bring back to us that is going to help us understand this problem, this idea more? That's where I'm kind of going, is what, what could staff actually do for information to bring back to us?
Yeah, Director Seegers, maybe you've got something to say to that?
Sure, I think, I think we don't know what staff's going to be able to bring back to us. They, they might say, you know, over the next two weeks, because that's basically the timeframe, we don't have any time to give to this. They might come back and say, well, we've looked at these pieces and these are all the questions we still have. You know, and I, I mean, I think that's something that we probably want to know, is what kinds of questions, what kinds of things, you know, what kind of timeframe do they see putting into this to be able to even come to us and say, you know, yes, we think it could work, or no, we don't think it could work, or, you know, we're, I mean, I, it's a whole unknown. But I think that's, I think staff know us well enough now that they, they can, they know they can come to us and say, there's no way we're going to make this happen. We just, we don't have the capacity, or whatever. So, but that's, that's what we need to know to be able to say, because in the end, if we say, yes, we agree in principle, we need to know what that workload's going to look like for staff. Can they even do it? I think, okay.
All right, things started rocking out here. CEO, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. We had a little misadventure with the water on the keyboard there. With this timeline, typically, reports for that June 23rd meeting are due tomorrow. Though that meeting agenda typically be published a week ahead of time, so there's very little time available. We still haven't seen a business case to analyze, so it's really hard from a staff perspective to, to prejudge or guess right now what that business case might tell us. And so it's, short of potentially sharing the building plans, it, there might not be a lot that we have that we can bring back in two weeks' time.
All right, Brenda.
I believe we were under the impression we needed a more direction to work with staff before we could send you that kind of detail.
Okay, well, I guess that's what this motion's all about. Could we get a readback of that motion by any chance? Because it's been a while since we've, since we've put it out, either from you or, yeah. Do you want to put the microphone?
That the committee whole recommend partnering with the Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society to have a junior hockey team based on the Sunshine Coast be referred to staff to explore the opportunity further and work with the group with a timeline that will facilitate the direction the group is moving, and that a report be presented to the board on June 23rd. And further to that, this recommendation be forwarded to the June 9th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Sorry, just one minor amendment to that. Report back to the committee the whole on June 23rd, not to the board.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. CEO, you still have your hand up? Did you want to speak? Nope. Brenda? Nope. Director Bemish?
I don't know if it's an amendment or an additional resolution, but I would actually propose that we do provide the ASBILTS now, because I think there's two parallel streams as the staff are preparing their report, that the, the organization could also be looking at the nature of the changes required and how they fit in. Because I think we need to do as much in tandem at this point in time and not kind of sequentially. And so that shouldn't be after the 23rd, we provide the ASBILTS. We can do that now, I believe. So I think we should do that. So I would make that, as I, yeah.
All right, Director Seegers.
Yeah, in consultation with staff, until we actually give staff direction to work with them, and they had to set their society as well, so there was somebody who could actually give them to, we couldn't give them the, the ASBILTS. But once this motion is passed, those can go, no, once this, this motion that's on the floor is passed, that we direct staff to work with them, the ASBILTS can be sent. Okay, thanks.
All right, so looking to staff, I don't think we need a separate motion to send the ASBILTS. Okay. All right, that, I think, comes to us calling the question at this point. Any, oh, CFO, not CFO, corporate officer, that's the one.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that building plans are copyrighted. And so under the federal act, they can be released, but they have to be released through an FOI. So could the group please submit an FOI request for those plans, and then we would be able to facilitate their release?
All right. I'm sure that'll happen within hours. Wow. Tight timelines. Okay, well, let's call the question. All those in favor of the motion? All right, motion carries. Well, thanks everyone for coming, and, and I do feel a little bad for burdening staff with such heavy workload in such a short period of time, but I think this is an opportunity that should be explored. And then, one last comment from Stu?
I just want to thank the board and the staff for the, for working with us on this. Very, very exciting times, and I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but raring to go, and thank you, thank you very much for helping us move this forward.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, that brings us to the next point of our agenda, and that's a motion to receive all the reports. And do we have some communication? No, we don't have any communication, so just a motion to receive all the reports. All right, moved, seconded, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Let's, that's a good idea. Let's take a five-minute break at this point, and we will be back at 11:00 a.m. take a five-minute break at this point, and we will be back at 11:00 a.m. All right, we are reconvened for the Committee of the Whole Thursday, June 9, 2022. We are on to item number four on the agenda, the water supply update from our GM of Infrastructure Services.
Thank you, Chair. A quick water update, it's raining outside. Again. So, this is, I'd like to, I really appreciate to be able to give updates like this every month to the board, where I provide an update that it's still raining outside and that we still have enough water in most of our systems. So having said that, as always, the temperature and rainfall will determine the rate of snowmelt, and it has been colder than usual last several weeks. It has been raining a lot. So we are, we never do it, but we're going to do it this year. Next week, staff will go up again to see what the snow depth actually is, because there's still snow at Chapman Lake. So the reason for us going up is primarily just to confirm the rate of snowmelt at this point in time. Yesterday, Environment Canada indicated that they expect it to be cooler weather for the upcoming two to four weeks, at least next two weeks. It looks like it's going to be cooler and a little bit drier than, for example, today, but there's still some rain in the forecast. So given all of that, I think that staff expect that the snowmelt will continue into early July. So that means that stage two is not in play for Chapman Water System until later in July. So this is in the forecast as of July, the second by Environment Canada, and you can see that green, that are green. The red areas are hotter than normal, the blue areas are lower than normal. Central Coast is in one of those blue areas. And there are some parts of BC are already getting above normal, but you can see a large blue area in front of Vancouver Island. That's in part causing the cooler weather. There's a significant amount of cold weather there present. And staff will attend in the Environment Canada session shortly about their predictions for the rest of the summer. So all systems are currently in stage one. All the rain that we're currently having is not, is not having that much effect on the Eastbourne Water System. So we expect that the seasonal population to increase there in upcoming weeks, primarily after the July long weekend, there might be a need there to go to stage two for that water system. And yes, we issued one warning to somebody who is using water when not allowed. This is the average residential use for the electoral areas, and you can see that significantly lower than last year, which is to be expected, given that there is less need to water any gardens, lawns, et cetera, this year. So we sent out 276 letters yesterday related to leaks. And this year, last three months, we, about 200 leaks were resolved, were addressed. So that's great work by the community as well as by our staff. We exceeded 500 subscriptions to our monthly water update, which was a target we were striving for. So I'm glad that we have it now, and we're getting about five new subscriptions a week. And there are still funds available if residents want to apply for a rebate program for rainwater harvesting, there are still funds available. A quick update on the water supply project, Third Road Well Field, I was already alluding to last month, but we're having some supply chain issues with instrumentation to control pumps. It's the same type of instrumentation that's required to drive a car or do anything else that has a motor in it, and the car lots are empty. So we're, yeah, we need the same type of control for our pumps. And we're still working with our contractors to see if we can find an interim solution, but it's more and more likely that we won't get anything in place before early September, when we're hoping to manage the project. So it's most likely delayed at least until October. Langley Well Field Project has been drilling, some drilling been going on two weeks ago there, and more drilling to come there in upcoming weeks. And then after that, we'll confirm actually the final production of, production potential of the site, and we can use that information to apply for a water license. And Eastbourne, the timing of drilling of test wells there will be confirmed in weeks to come, and we expect it to happen this summer. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Have to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions from the board? Director Hiltz?
Thanks, thanks, Chair. Always, always got questions about water. And the eyes on Chapman. At one point, there was an upgrade to the SCADA system and the wireless connection. There was talk about kind of the reservoir cam up there. Has that kind of moved along where you could actually see what's going on there with the snow level? Has that progressed?
Mike? No, that's still in progress. Thank you.
Right, okay. Director McKeonan?
Thank you, Chair. Donna, Director McMahon, just asked me if I would request that the PDF be put available on the website, so public can see this and appreciate these reports. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Director. These presentations are always updated every the same day that they're provided. So they will be available later today on the website. Thank you.
Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about stage two. Traditionally, when do we go to stage two? And I believe you said later in July is the current thoughts for stage two. Was that correct, or were you thinking June?
Thank you for the question, Director. Yes, July. Normally, stage two is called the moment water stops flowing over Chapman Dam, because that's the moment that we have to rely on our storage in the, in Chapman Lake and Edwards Lake. Given that there is still snow melt, snow up there at the moment, the water will flow significantly, significant amount over the weir, and we expect that to continue for at least upcoming four weeks. So that's why I can say that stage two won't be called at least for, until the snowmelt's gone, and also the snow in other parts of the watershed is mostly gone, because there's still a lot of snow, there's even more snow on Montseal at the moment. So most of that will need to be gone before the water actually stops overflowing the weir, and we would have to call stage two. So we're in a good condition.
Follow-up?
Yes, it's, I feel like it's very unusual for us to go this long, but I haven't had a chance to check and see based on history. Is this unusual, or is this, we're setting a new standard, or where are we?
Thank you for the question. I don't have all the dates with me for the last 10 years, but stage two has been, it's, it's not uncommon for stage two to be called in July. It has happened more often. Only, I think, the last five years, we've been used to doing it in June or July, or early July, because I think a couple of years ago, three, two or three was July 7. And I think we'll be later this year.
Thank you.
All right, Director Pat?
Got to love January. I'm, yeah, it's a lot of happy dances, I will say. And the only other comment I really wanted to make, I really appreciate these reports as well. And I'm, I will note that the water events, the water information event that staff held earlier this week, you can tell the community is really getting very educated about our water sources, just based on the quality of questions that we're getting coming in and comments. So very much appreciate the efforts of staff in getting this information out there. So thank you.
Director Hiltz?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. In your presentation, in the early slide there, there was the 2022 watering restrictions flyer, new version of the older one. Just looking on the website, there's a couple there still. It might be hard to find that. That one is particularly good, because it goes by the how you use the water. So I just saw that little screen, that looks really effective compared to the older format. So it's just, there is, there might be some confusion on the website about what's the, the current and best looking one and the best quality information. So that's a comment. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any further hands up. So I think we'll move on to reports number five and six, which I believe GM Gagnon is going to introduce in tandem, because they're somewhat interrelated.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll actually reintroduce any reports and also following up, because unfortunately, Manager Walton has been called away. So at last minute. So if I may, I'm just going to share my screen as a way of introducing these two reports. Okay. So this slide should look familiar to you, because it is the annual cycle by which we plan with our, alongside with our partners in BC Transit. So we begin our annual operating budget discussions with BC Transit in the fall, early fall, late summer of every year. So if I had a pointer, I could, I could point you to that, but it's, it's, you can see it on the right-hand bottom end of your circle. Sort of the fall, we're starting conversations around that three-year forecasting cycle that includes any priorities through the TIPS program that we've heard about. And then BC Transit then submits their service plans and their budgets to the province in October. We come to you around the same time. This last year, we present a report to you on our draft AOA and budget for the following year that informs our financial plan. Then in the spring, BC Transit hears back on the provincial budget, and so they look to try and execute their AOA. And that is one of the reasons that we're here today, is that we have the AOA to, to bring before you. And then we start the whole thing over again. And actually, that's occurring right now. Over the next two weeks, as a priority for BC Transit, we are examining the priorities that the board approves for the Transit Future Action Plan, a couple of, gosh, I think it was probably a couple of months ago already, so that we can be in, in a stage where we can bring something forward to the board for consideration in July. So that is happening right now. And, you know, then we, we kind of start the cycle again. Fall, we are putting in budgets, they're putting in budgets, et cetera. So we, we do bring the AOA to you today to look at formally executing. And alongside that, we bring a secondary report, and they were, they were deliberately presented to you in that order. And it may seem a little bit strange, because I think you're probably saying, well, why didn't you just amend the agreement in the first place? And it really was a matter of timing, and that's all it was. So we already had our AOA in draft, those budgets were already presented to you and the province. And then the injection of additional safe restart happened, which is a welcomed injection for sure, because our ridership still has not recovered to pre-COVID levels. But it was just a matter of timing. So we have to get our AOA signed and executed, and then we move into an amendment of that AOA, AOA in order to access those restart funds. So I just wanted to make sure that I explained that, because I know it looked a little strange, I'm sure, when you saw the two reports. And just remind you about where we're in that, that planning cycle, because I know it's a little bit, a little bit confusing. So with that, I would, I would introduce the annual operating agreement report. And I don't have Manager James's, or Manager Walton's notes here, but I'm quite familiar with this. So there is no significant changes in the AOA this year from last year, because if you remember, we, we did not have any priorities or expansion considerations this past year. So there's very, very little change in the AOA. The one change that I could note for you is that BC Transit has agreed to partner and provide a financial contribution to our infrastructure study, our Mason Yard Transit Infrastructure Expansion Study, which was as per one of the priorities that we'd identified in the Transit Future Action Plan. So good news indeed, and we are already moving forward on that together. It will focus on the transit piece of that, but that will inform the other partners that are on-site, parks and utilities. So excited to get that moving. But other than that, it really is just a repeat of last year, no changes to the agreement itself. So happy to answer any questions you might have about the Transit AOA.
Great, thank you. If you wouldn't mind stopping the screen share, so we can look at who's got their hands up. All right, and then we'll go to the directors. Any questions? If not, there is. Director Seegers, go ahead.
Thank you. GM Gagnon actually answered my question, because I was wondering what were the changes in this annual operating agreement over the last one. And she said, basically, there's none except that one. So I'm... basically, there's none except that one. So I'm pleased to move the recommendation on page one.
Okay. Do you want to speak before we, oh, you're seconding it. Okay, all right, she beat you to it. All right. I don't see any further hands up at this point. So I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Anyone against? No? Okay, that motion is carried. Director Hiltz, you-
Yeah, if I may, Chair, just a question on a comment of GM Gagnon.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the change is the support from BC Transit. Is there any scale that you could suggest is their level of support in the, anything you can say about that at this point? Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Yes, BC Transit is willing to support a cost share that is reflective of a, of a combination of the two cost share arrangements that we have already. So if you'll remember, the cost share for Transit, conventional, is a little bit different than custom, in that they pay a little bit more for custom, a little bit less for conventional. And so we were able to end up on a, how about a blend of the two? So whatever the study ends up costing us, they will contribute, it's close to, it's close to a 50-50 split, not quite there, but it's close to a 50-50. And we will be seeing what the study costs as we go out to the market. Thank you.
Great. Okay, moving on to Report Number Six, Annex B, Transit Safe Restart and Recovery Additional Contribution 2022. And GM Gagnon has already introduced this. I'm wondering if anyone has anything to say. Director Seegers?
Thank you. I think it's, thank you for the extra money, and I'll move the recommendations on page five.
All right, I'm happy to second that one as well, as, well as a number of other peoples. All right, I guess I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, staff, and thank you, the province. All right, we are moving on to Item Number Seven, RFP 2261308 Sunshine Coast Arena Roof Replacement, Bitumen Contract Award. Do we need to bring, oh, Mr. Van Velson's already in the, in the meeting, so I think he is presenting this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The roof over the workshop, Zamboni Room and Refrigeration Plant Room at Sunshine Coast Arena, has reached the end of its serviceable life. There are some active leaks currently in the roof, and it requires replacement. This RFP 2261308 was issued to procure contracted services to replace the roof over these areas. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Okay, opening it up for any questions the committee might have. Director Hiltz.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, supportive of the recommendation. Are you foreseeing any issues with supply chains at this point, in terms of being able to, it's raining now, it will stop raining at some point, so maybe not. But do you see any supply issues, or are we, are you feeling quite confident in the timelines that are presented? Thanks.
Thank you for the question. The contractor has indicated to us that they're quite confident that they can meet the timeline of completing the project by August 31st.
Great. Okay, I don't see any more hands up. Does, do I see a motion? Anybody? Director Seegers?
Thank you. I'll move the recommendations on page 10.
And I see seconders. Okay, I'll call the question, unless I see, nope. Okay, calling the question. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Manager Van Velson. And we will move on to Item Number Eight, Annex D, Request for Proposal 2211601 Pickup Trucks, Fire Department's Award Report. And we've got Chief Michael in the, or in the, what is it? Not delegation, well, presenting, there we go. We'll go with presenting. Thank you, Chief Michael.
All right, thank you, Chair. During the 2022 SCRD budget process, and part of the Fire Department's 20-year capital plan, the Gibsonson District Fire Department and Half Moon Bay Fire Departments were approved to purchase two pickup-style command vehicles. The budget for the replacement was $73,900 and $85,900 respectively. I'm not sure why there was a different budget for each department, but I can assure the committee that we are working with asset management to continue to improve, revise, and align our capital plans. Two compliant proposals were received, and the evaluation committee recommends a contract be awarded to Hub Fire Engines and Equipment Limited in the amount up to a total value of $263,096 or $1,031,548 per department. It is proposed that operating reserves be used to address the funding gap. This amount includes a 10% contingency as supply chain issues have hit the automotive industry particularly hard. As a result, we were unable to be provided with an estimated delivery date, and the manufacturer is unsure when the vehicles will arrive. We anticipate the delay could be 12 months or longer. A significant portion of the cost of this proposal is the upfitting of the pickup trucks to include a canopy with slide-out tray for storage of firefighting equipment, and light and siren package for emergency response. The pickup trucks are expected to be well-rounded, to be used as a duty vehicle, command center, personnel transport, tow or support vehicle, and can be used to respond to a multitude of incidents, including wildfire response. The committee may wish to not award this project, or ask the Fire Department to reduce the scope. However, it is not anticipated that costs will be drastically reduced, or that delivery times will improve. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you for that, and I'll go to Director Seegers.
Thank you. I don't actually vote on this, but I had a question I brought up during the agenda review. So we're buying capital, and we have sufficient funds in our capital budgets. I'm wondering why the, they're indicated to be funded from operating reserves. I'm wondering if staff can advise on that.
To staff.
I could take an initial stab at that, and CFO may want to jump in. For me, operating reserves seem to be a good fit, considering that the surplus from our wildfire deployments went into operating reserves in the last season. And it is also my understanding that the, although there is funding in the capital reserves, that it is tied very directly with the 20-year capital plan, and if I were to mess with that funding stream, then I would impact the entire plan moving forward.
All right, decent answer. CFO, did you want to add to that?
Well, just to also state that operating reserves are not prescribed to, they can be used for both operating and eminent projects such as this. So Chief Michael is correct in saying that they are options to fund capital projects, and this is a good fit, as it is an overage and is outside of the prescribed capital plan.
All right, Director Hiltz.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just wondering, is it, is it a like-for-like replacement, or did you get some additional capacity in, in the course of this?
Yeah, I'd suggest it's a like-for-like. The pickup truck is a little bit larger, a bit newer. You know, I believe the old pickup trucks had utilized some spare parts for their light and siren package and things like that, so we've, we've replaced with new on this. It's worth pointing out, too, that we did request bids for used as well, so that we were looking to elicit as many bids as we could, and no vendor provided a used truck for us.
I have a question whether the idea of replacing with electric, I know it's probably a bit early in the game, because I think the electric trucks are just coming out now, but I think, you know, two or three years, we would probably be looking at an electric replacement on this, rather than a gas-powered one. But just wondering if any of that was considered at all?
Yeah, I'd actually love to answer that question, because I see a lot of good work happening in the electrification. In particular, the Sustainability Department, we had some consultations, and it truly breaks my heart that we're not able to move in that direction at this time, just due to the operational needs of the fire departments, because there's a great amount of work that's being done there. We're just not ready yet, as far as the fires should go, in my opinion.
Okay, Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not in this service, but I couldn't help answering, asking out of curiosity. Metro Motors, I'm assuming, was Ford trucks, and I suspect they're probably one-ton trucks you're buying. And Hub must buy some sort of vehicle from one of the major manufacturers and then outfit it, or do they have their own body, they stick on a chassis?
I'll give that one a stab as well. The vehicle we were requesting was a 3/4 ton. We had seen a couple of proposals varying from 3/4 ton to one ton. It is my understanding that the vehicle purchased from Hub needed to have modifications done to it, or they would not be eligible to bid. The bid itself asked for a pickup truck, and optional to add the upfitting on it as well, again, in an effort to elicit additional bids. So I think both proposals were similar. The difference really came in, in the upfitting, and the committee found that to be desirable.
Thank you.
All right. I haven't seen any questions coming from the funding areas, except for Director Hiltz, I guess, but that would mean that maybe somebody might be willing to make a motion. Director Hiltz?
Sure, I'll move the recommendations as per page 12 of the report.
Okay, that's seconded. All right. Do we have any more comments, questions around this? No? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All right, and motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our last, Item Nine, Annex E, Water Supply Advisory Committee Minutes of May 16, 2022. And it's just a matter of receiving the report. Do we have any recommendations coming out of that? Director Seegers, any comments?
Thank you. There is a recommendation on page 16, and I don't know where the committee would like to go with that. I have some issues with the wording, and this would be more for staff, I think. Typically, we have our advisory committees who recommend, make recommendations to committee or to the SCRD, and this isn't actually worded that way. So, you know, it's basically saying, do this. Well, it's up to us whether or not we're going to do this. So going forward, I'd like to see the recommendations reflect the advisory role that the committee has, and then I'd just bring it to the attention of the committee here as to whether or not we'd want to do something on this. I do know that the District of Sea Shalt has not come back with the final water, is it reclaimed water study? They came forward with a draft. The final has not come back to us. And I believe, and we, GM Rosenbaum could actually advise us on this, I believe that our departments are in contact with the regional district departments about this. Thanks.
Yeah, maybe we can get a brief update from GM Rosenbaum as to what's already been actioned.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair and Director, for the opportunity. We've worked with the District of Sea Shalt on the, on the study, and we received the final copy from District Sea Shalt staff for release to WASAC members. So staff, District Sea Shalt staff indicated that it was public, so, and final, so that's what we did. Further, we've been, yeah, we're in contact, but we are awaiting direction, further direction to actually assess the, if this is something that the District Sea Shalt and the SCRD would like to, would like to advance. What we are going to do, and what was not included in District Sea Shalt study, and what is, what will be done based on the study, is the actual assessment of the benefits and other considerations for the SCRD. We first wanted to wait if it was even feasible to do it, technically, what the implications would be from a financial point of view, to construct it before we, before we advance further work. And one of the most, highest priority would be to even conform with administrative environment, how they would feel about discharging affluent water of a higher quality within the creek to augment flows, because it would be the first in, in BC. So that's one of the first things that we were undertaking. The Fire Chair of WASAC did a, he has an engineering background, and he did an analysis of the benefits from a flow perspective, from a cube per, and liters per second perspective. And there's definitely some validity there. We will have to review that, but there's no doubt that it, that it will, that there will be, from a flow perspective, a benefit to it. But if it's legally possible, if it's regulatory possible, if it's financially feasible, a feasible option, that's all to be determined.
Thank you. So does staff feel like they need some more direction in order to move forward on this, or do, do you think we, so, I guess what I'm asking is, is the recommendation that WASAC made helpful, or is it not something that we need to entertain at this time?
Thank you for the question. The primary concern from WASAC was that we haven't done all the work yet, that they, that, that was included in the recommendation that was adopted by the board on this item earlier. They were primarily concerned, they were like, why haven't you done the work yet? And our focus currently has been on getting water supply projects, like Church Road, Landville, in place that could actually, that are, can be constructed in the, in the short term. And we see this, this is more a long-term option that at some point can be compared with Royal Water Reserve or Clougho, or our new groundwater development sources. So we didn't felt the urgency to do this work, especially not while District Sea Shalt was still undertaking their study. And so it's on a work plan to do the work, and it's, it's a question for the committee if they support the urgency from the, from that WASAC feels, and then will, a timeline for us to get going would be, would be required, otherwise we'll just continue with the work in, with District Sea Shalt, and see how we can include it in our current work plan.
Thank you. Director McKeonan.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of Director McMahon, one of her comments was the use of the word expeditiously, when exactly what you have just explained, there is the preliminary work to be done. It seemed to her like they, they were trying to put the cart, or suggest putting the cart before the horse, kind of thing. So I think she was in favor of recommending that this be tabled until such time as there is more, you know, more information, and exactly really what you've just said.
All right, Director Seegers.
Thank you. From, from what you said, seems to indicate that we have already given staff direction to look at this item. So when they're looking at expeditiously, I mean, we've, we're already working on the environmental flow need requirements. That information has gone, or the request has gone into the province around that, which may allow us to reduce- may allow us to reduce some of the flow that's going to be required to come down the creek. The other piece is, the District of Seashell as well, is not ready to move forward with something like this. That part of this, I think the, the piece that, that's important is a regulatory possibility. That's the piece that we all need to know, whether or not it's even possible to do this. Is that part of the work that you have planned, that you're going to be looking at? So, you don't need a recommendation to move that forward?
No, the regulatory feasibility is something that we have planned to undertake in the coming months.
Okay. I think that's the piece that we all need around this. The timing for the District of Seashell would be tied into the sewer commission that is just started up, because as the water coming out of the wastewater treatment plant, the Water Resource Center in Seashell increases, one of the things that we're going to need to look at is a different outfall. And it's at that point that we would be ready to look at, do we just go out into the ocean, or is it something that could be used to augment the, the creek flow? So, that regulatory piece will come into play then, as well as the costs and benefits of the option. Thanks.
All right, thank you for that. And it sounds like we do not need to make a motion at this point, unless somebody feels that there's some urgency on this item. I don't see any hands flying up. So, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We've got no communications, no new business, no in camera, and that leaves us to adjournment, motion to adjourn. Move, seconded, all those in favor? Thanks, everyone. And that brings this meeting to... All right, thanks.